I'm going to call the Special Meeting of Council to order. I need a motion to approve the agenda, please.
Seconded.
Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor. Any opposed? None motion is carried. I'm going to provide you with some opening remarks, and this is about the public hearing and the process of the public hearing. This is a public hearing to consider an application for an official community plan and zoning bylaw amendment for the property located at 337 Victoria View Road, McLaughlin Point. The bylaws being considered are, number one, the official community plan bylaw, 2006, number 2646, amendment bylaw number 14, 2013, number 2804; number two, the zoning bylaw, 1992, number 2050, amendment bylaw number 208, 2013, number 2805; and item three, zoning bylaw, 1992, number 2050, amendment bylaw number 209, 2013, number 2806. The purpose of the bylaws is to allow for the development of a new wastewater treatment plant on this site. The purpose of the public hearing is to allow all persons who deem their interest in property to be affected by the proposed bylaws an opportunity to be heard, or to present written submissions to council on matters contained in the bylaw. It is important that all who speak at this meeting restrict their remarks to the matters contained in the bylaw. It is the main function of all council members to listen to the views of the public. It is not council's function at this public hearing to debate the merits of the proposed bylaws with individual citizens or amongst ourselves. Please remember to address your comments to council. After the public hearing, council will not accept further communications or presentations from the public or the applicant respecting this bylaw. Has the township received any written or verbal comments relating to these bylaws?
Yes, we have, if I can summarize those. We have received 75 comments. Fifty-six are in opposition to the rezoning of McLaughlin Point. One is in favor. Two are in favor of only bylaws 2804 and 2806. And 16 were neutral, meaning that they were just expressing concerns or requesting additional information but did not indicate support or opposition to the bylaws.
Excuse me, Anya. I'm going to ask you to pull the mic closer. Thank you.
So a total of 75 comments were received, 56 in opposition, one in favor, two in favor of only bylaws 2804 and 2806, and 16 were neutral. All of the comments received up to today at 4 o'clock have been included in the public hearing binder, which is available for public review. And following the close of this public hearing, council will be receiving a copy of all additional comments received since the June 24 meeting, including written comments submitted during this public hearing.
Thank you. I will invite speakers in the following order. First, we will have the Director of Development Services provide an overview of the bylaws and the process. Second, I will ask the applicant or the authorized representative to provide a presentation of the application, and I'm hopeful that we can contain that to about 15 minutes. Public input, I will invite persons wishing to speak to come forward, and I do have a sign-up list, and so we will start with that when we get to the public input. And as I said, if you can please remember to address council, and to provide your name and your address, and limit your comments to five minutes. I will ask for first-time speakers. If we complete that, I will then ask for second-time speakers, and so on until we've received all of the input. I would also ask you to be respectful of people that are speaking. We will hear many different views tonight. It is not appropriate to clap. It's important that council can hear and can listen to what is being presented to us and what your input is. And I will try and hold you to that should you stray. Everybody ready? I will now ask the Director of Development Services to speak.
Your worship, members of council, I'll go briefly through the proposed bylaws before you this evening. My presentation is on the PowerPoint to the left of the audience.
Excuse me, Mr. Brown. We need to have it slowed down because of that echo, if you don't mind. Thank you.
Sure. Yeah. There are three bylaws that council is considering for this public hearing. One is the official community plan amendment bylaw, bylaw number 2804. One is the CRD zoning bylaw amendment, bylaw number 2805. And one is the additional amenities zoning bylaw amendment, number 2806. And I will go through details of all three of these bylaws in a moment. It's important to remember that all bylaws, not only the zoning bylaw, but all bylaws of the Township of Esquimalt must conform to the official community plan. If council does not approve the OCP amendment bylaw 2804, they cannot approve either of the zoning bylaw amendments. Brief the site context. The McLaughlin Point should be shown there in a red circle. It's surrounded by DND lands. Lyle Street, which forms the boundary, is shown there. West Bay neighborhood is there, for context. And the McLaughlin Point sewage outfall is shown there. So that shows the context of the area we're dealing with. In terms of legislative context, it's important to remember that Section 37 Sub 6 of the Environmental Management Act allows the lieutenant governor and council to approve the sewage treatment plant if it does not conform to our zoning bylaw. Currently, it does not conform. The bylaws before council this evening would make it conform, but it's ultimately up to the council to decide whether or not to approve the OCP amendment and zoning bylaw amendment. Otherwise, the government, provincial government, does have the authority to approve the sewage treatment plant at McLaughlin Point. So with regard to the OCP amendment, Local Government Act, Section 877-1-F states that an OCP must include statements and map designations respecting the location of waste treatment and disposal sites. So one of the amendments proposed for the OCP is an amendment to Schedule D, the map showing the location of waste treatment plants, in order for our OCP to conform to the requirements of the Local Government Act. We are also going to add a new section, Section 378, which will provide context for the McLaughlin Point location. And in addition, there will be development permit guidelines added that deal specifically with the proposed plant. In addition, Section 245, the industrial area oil storage facility section, will be replaced with a new heading and text dealing specifically with the proposed plant. And Section 952 will be amended, adding additional development permit area purposes, protection of natural environment, protection from hazardous conditions, energy conservation, water conservation, and greenhouse gas emissions. Furthermore, a new section, Section 9.5.6, will be added. It deals with the specific development permit area and specific development permit guidelines for this area. Development proposed guidelines include an eight-meter buffer from the high watermark, a four-meter heavily landscaped buffer within the eight-meter buffer, a stepping back of the buildings from the high watermark, special design for the seawall, establishment of a historical interpretation program, establishment of public access to the eight-meter buffer, incorporation of a water feature as public art, consider design that contributes to the scenic beauty of the harbor, and incorporate the findings of the model of potential tsunami inundation limits and run-up report. And finally, to add Schedule H to the official community plan, the design guidelines that have been brought forward by the CRD. So that's a summary of the official community plan amendment. Rezoning bylaw amendment 2805, this is the bylaw that conforms to the application submitted by the CRD. It would create a new zone, comprehensive development zone 83. There would be two permitted uses in this zone, wastewater treatment plant and accessory uses. This bylaw is based on the density bonus methodology, or amenity zoning. This table shows you the base density. So in amenity zoning, we start with a base density, shown here in the center column, and then there's a bonus density. If you supply all the amenities, then you're given the development rights in the bonus density. So the base density, the center column, would give a density enough to build a sewage treatment plant that would have enough capacity to deal with Esquimalt sewage, plus a little bit more. If the amenities in the bylaw are provided, then the development rights, shown on the right-hand column, would allow for the development of a sewage treatment plant big enough to deal with the sewage as proposed by the CRD in their application. Proposed amenities in bylaw 2805 are the implementation of the May 2013 design guidelines, upgrade to the water firefighting protection, upgrades to the power grid between the substation and the wastewater treatment plant, road upgrades, Lyle Street enhancements, up to $950,000, incorporation of education interpretive center, and public access and public walkway. Resoning bylaw 2806 would amend the marine navigation zone, so this is the additional amenity bylaw now that was proposed by staff, to add to the marine navigation zone marine outfalls and boat moorage facilities. The M4 is the water area off the shore. The previous bylaw 2805 also amended the M4 area to allow for marine outfalls and boat moorage facilities. Resoning bylaw 2806 amends the existing I-3 bulk petroleum storage zone and renames it the McLaughlin Point Special Use Zone. Permitted uses in this zone would be wastewater treatment plant, which may include commercial instruction and education, educational interpretive center, research establishment, business and professional office, marine outfall, and accessory uses. So this bylaw proposes that in addition to a sewage treatment plant, you could have mixed uses, which include any of these. In addition, permitted uses are business and professional office, high technology uses, accessory retail, hotel, entertainment and theater, boat moorage facilities, and parks. So this allows for a much broader range of permitted uses than the 2805. 2806 is also amenity zoning bylaw. The base density allows for plant capacity to service Esquimalt. Its bonus densities are done in stepwise progression in three levels, which we'll go through in a minute. Level three allows for plant capacity as requested by the CRD. Each level requires more amenities to be provided. The bylaw incorporates three levels of community, which some amenities are based on, so when we speak of immediate community, it's this area basically the southeast quadrant of the intersection of Lamson and Esquimalt Road. Other amenities deal with the near neighborhood, which is a 1,500-meter radius from the proposed McLaughlin Point. And then we speak of the extended community, which is a 2,500-meter radius from the McLaughlin This table summarizes the base density and the amenity levels, level one, level two, level three. If you look at the table, you will see as you progress through each level, the densities increase until you reach level three, which is the density proposed by the CRD for their building of their sewage treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant, at a capacity to serve the seven communities and two First Nations proposed in their application. We will now go through the proposed amenities. In bylaw 2806, the level one amenities are mandatory barging. There's been significant public concern about the number of trucks that will be going through the residential neighborhoods in Esquimalt. So this requires mandatory barging, requires the building of a pier to support the barging, traffic integration amenities for the immediate neighborhood of value no less than $950,000, a 25-square-meter education interpretive center, high-efficiency air filter systems for schools in the immediate community, remember that's the West Bay and McLaughlin Point area, lead gold in implementation of the CRD's design standards and guidelines, and upgrade of the McCully Point pump station to the equivalent of the proposed Craig Flower pump station. Level two amenities are, so each condition level one will be required, in addition, a minimum of 1,000 square meters of public open space, a minimum of $100,000 of public art, education interpretive center, a minimum of 50 square meters, high-efficiency air filter systems on all schools in the nearby neighborhood, so that's the 1,500-meter radius, extension of green building and design guidelines to larger building, and upgrade of all pump stations in the nearby neighborhood to the Craig Flower standard. Amenity level three is all previous amenities, plus public open space amenities of $75,000 at the site, so that could include park development, trail development, provision of a harbor pedestrian ferry service, development of a public walkway to West Bay, part of the design guidelines already contemplate, a public walkway along the foreshore, additional traffic integration amenities, a minimum of 75-square-meter education interpretive center, high-efficiency air filter systems on schools in extended community, so that's a 2,500-meter radius, and extended green building and design guidelines to the larger building. In addition, amenities would include a rooftop wetland using reclaimed water from the wastewater treatment plant, heritage interpretive signage, fire hydrant upgrade in the immediate community, provision of underground conduit to facilitate undergrounding of overhead utilities, reinstatement of all roads to preconstruction conditions, and upgrade of all pump stations in the extended community to the Craig Flower standard. In addition, odor-reducing noise mitigation measures will be required, products and byproducts and bio solids to be moved off-site by pipeline and marine transportation only, no odor-causing or methane-producing facilities except pipelines and pump stations in the extended community, so that's a 2,500-meter radius, and annual contribution of $55,000 to the McLaughlin Point amenity fund, and formation of an ongoing liaison committee. Finally, other standards in the zone would be amended. We would increase the maximum height from 10 meters to 15 meters for mixed-use developments. The maximum height of a building within 20 meters of the high watermark would be 5 meters. No building within 7.5 meters of the high watermark, and a four-meter-wide buffer to be located within a 7.5-meter buffer from the high watermark. Your worship, that concludes the review of the proposed bylaws before you. Just a summary of next steps, so this evening you will hear from the public and the applicant. We will then get a release from the Ministry of the Environment under the Site Profile legislation, and this will come back to council on their July 15 regular meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I'll now open it up to council members for questions of staff. Are there any questions? You must have done a good job. Thank you very much. I'll now ask the proponent to come forward, and I'm not sure who's speaking, Mr. Hall. Welcome.
Yeah, we do have some information to provide to council on our application.
Yes, Madam Mayor and council. What this is, is a composite...
Talk a little closer.
I'm sorry. A composite of some information that you've actually already received, plus in booklet form, information that you'll be receiving this evening. So we've got enough copies for members of council and staff, and so I'll just give this to the...
I'll ask you to give it to the corporate clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. After I've spoken, Chair Bryson will address...
Jack, you're soft in the voice, so bring it right up.
Okay.
Thank you.
After I have made my presentation, Chair Bryson will make a presentation to council as well.
Thank you.
So the purpose of the rezoning is to construct a secondary wastewater treatment facility with capacity to serve the seven CRD municipalities and two First Nations until approximately 2040. In the future, additional capacity will likely be required in growth areas, for example, primarily on the west shore. So why sewage treatment? Well, we got provincial direction in 2006 that the existing system was not adequate, and we had to provide secondary sewage treatment. In July, just about a year ago, new federal regulations came into place that required the CRD to provide sewage treatment by December 31, 2020. And why secondary sewage treatment? Well, we have to meet the federal and provincial regulations. Secondary treatment will reduce the contaminants being discharged to the marine environment, and it will also provide an opportunity for some resource recovery at the facility, primarily heat, which will be used to heat the building. And the other resource, of course, is the organic material, the sludge that's produced at the wastewater treatment plant. So as mentioned earlier, the site context doesn't quite show up as well, but the red spot there is the location of the treatment plant, and roughly 655 meters from Hogginpoint, and 700 meters from Esquimalt residents to the west, and about 500 meters to the north. Of course, there are some DND residences within that radius. So why McLaughlin Point? Well, the site was available. It was a previous industrial use zoning for the Imperial Oil facility, and it is a heavily disturbed brownfield site. It is currently designated industrial in the current Esquimalt OCP. The location is obviously close to the ocean for an ocean outfall, and by constructing at McLaughlin Point, no other uses or activities will be displaced. It's also in close proximity to the population that will be served. The site is buffered from adjacent land uses, and it is and was an alternative to McCully Point in response to concerns from Esquimalt with the social and environmental impacts of going to build a plant at McCully Point. And it is the lowest-cost option of all the options that we have looked at. As I mentioned earlier, it is zoned industrial, and until recently served as an oil storage facility for probably close to 100 years. And the historic photographs show the extent of the industrial activities, and including the dock facility that has since been removed. Obviously, in that prominent location, there are concerns or have been concerns expressed, and the CRD is committed to developing in consultation with the residents and with the design panels from Victoria and Esquimalt to develop design guidelines that will be included in the RFP. It's clear in the guidelines that the design must respect the site as a gateway location to Victoria, must respect the natural shoreline, must respect the site context, and integrate with the site and its surroundings. During the RFP process, we will be working collaboratively with the three proponents that have been shortlisted, and we will include representatives from the Esquimalt Design Panel and Victoria Design Panel, as well as the designers that participated in the design charade earlier this year. The intent being that by the time the proposals are submitted, everyone will be satisfied that the design guidelines have been met. So it's really a pass/fail criteria that we're applying to the design guidelines. We have heard, obviously, that there are concerns about the construction period, and as part of the requirements for the RFP, the project co must develop a traffic management plan, and it can only do that in consultation and collaboration with Esquimalt and local residents. Public safety will be a high priority and commitment from the contractor enforced by the CRD. We will establish a communications hotline for the public to express concerns or complaints, and there will be a requirement for ongoing liaison with the local community. In terms of the governance of the project, the CRD has appointed a panel of outside experts who bring a broad range of expertise to the commission, and they are charged with promoting innovation in design and approaches to wastewater treatment. They've been charged with maximizing the value for money for the CRD residents, and emphasizing sustainability, social, environmental, and economic criteria. And in fact, those criteria are part of the evaluation of the proposals that we hope to get in January. And they're, of course, responsible for the budget management. So our request to Esquimalt is that the location be rezoned to permit the construction of a wastewater treatment plant at McLaughlin Point. Now I'll hand it over to the Chair of the CRD Board. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Desjardins, members of council, staff, members of the community. As Chair of the Capital Regional District Board, I'm attending the public hearing to ask you to approve the proposed amendments to the Esquimalt Official Community Plan and Zoning Bylaws, numbers 2804 and 2805, to accommodate the McLaughlin Point sewage treatment plant as requested by the CRD. As you know, the CRD acts for the seven municipalities and two First Nations by agreement who participate in the Core Area Liquid Waste Management Service. In 2006, the B.C. Minister of Environment required a detailed fixed schedule for secondary wastewater treatment. The requirement for wastewater treatment is also affirmed by the federal government's 2012 Wastewater Systems Effluent Regulations, which now require the implementation of secondary wastewater treatment across Canada. As all members of council know, the Minister of Environment approved amendments to the Core Area Liquid Waste Management Plan in 2010, designating McLaughlin Point as the site for the treatment plant. The decision was made following several years of consultation, which included more than 100 meetings as deemed appropriate by the minister. At that time, Esquimalt council advised the CRD that the McLaughlin Point site was a preferred location over the McCully Point. Since 2010, approval of the Core Area Liquid Waste Management Plan, the capacity of the plant has been refined based... plant has been refined based on sustainability principles, operating feasibility, value for money, and an approved and agreed-on funding formula. Elimination of water reuse and a wet weather plan at Clover Point allowed for consolidation at McLaughlin Point and deferral of a decision on a west shore plant for several decades. This results in a cost savings to all participants of over $180 million, while not negating the opportunity for resource recovery. As you are aware, several other significant components of the overall system are located throughout the service area. The process to site these facilities has always been collaborative, with the aim of achieving mutually agreeable solutions. Indeed, despite news reports of the ups and downs of the processes, many useful agreements have been reached, informed to a large extent by the participants who make representations to the various bodies and decision-makers that provide for our democratic governance. On the application, our consultants and staff have worked closely with your staff to meet all of the application process requirements, including attending open houses, meeting with and responding to advisory committees, and explaining the opportunities and limitations the CRD has to consider when responding to your concerns as a publicly accountable order of government and authority. We have explained how we intend to mitigate impacts in the submissions made with the application. We have also been clear about the legal limitations the CRD has, and we have been forthright about our obligations under the Environmental Management Act. Therefore, I must say, with guidance from the CRD Solicitor, the list of conditions and the form of the alternate bylaw, Law 2806, that you have proposed, are well beyond our legal authority and in some cases areas unworkable. In this regard, I trust that Esquimalt Council has been fully informed of the legalities and the CRD's obligations and authority according to the Environmental Management Act and the funding arrangements and schedule that have the federal and provincial governments committing more than $500 million to the program. I would draw your attention to the letter of today's date from Sonia Santa Rosa, the CRD corporate officer, which is in the package that's just been circulated. A public hearing submission will not allow the CRD to fully present the undertakings made to Esquimalt through supporting information and within the performance requirements to be secured in the competitive design-build procurement process. The budget for the treatment plant will devote up to 5% to ensure design objectives are met in balance with sewage treatment requirements, with other resources devoted to mitigating impacts through specified performance requirements. While there have and will be many challenges to see the Core Area Liquid Waste Management program fully implemented, the CRD respects that Esquimalt Council will give due consideration to the input it has received throughout the process and at the public hearings. We remain committed to work with you to complete this important regional facility. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm hopeful that in the information you provided us with, this information, both the PowerPoint and the information that Chair Bryson has just read out is- Thank you. Council, I'll open it up for questions. Are there questions of the proponent at this time? I have a couple. In the package that we received, in the information that was the design guidelines, and I noticed that it's an updated version, I believe, May. It doesn't indicate that the view considerations of Swallow's Landing and Esquimalt Road were considered. Can you clarify that?
Madam Chair, in the revised May design guidelines, one of the operative words that was added was that views from all sides and above, recognizing that, for example, Swallow's Landing is one of those where you actually are looking at it down towards it. So it was, we were aware of Swallow's Landing and perhaps a couple of other properties that you might see from essentially above or from long distance. So those words were added in respect of that question.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad I clarified that. Anyone? There was a question that came forward from the last meeting with regards to the amount of GHG emissions and to what benefit that would be reduced. Has there been able, have you been able to get us any data on that information?
The GHG, GHG emissions was looked at as a whole for the whole treatment facilities, including the biosolids. So I think we do have a breakdown, which I can provide to you. I will do so tomorrow.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions from council members? Seeing none, we will now move on to members of the public.